Commissioner Benson? Commissioner Freitas?
Also present.
I think he clicked you. He did, okay.
Present.
There we go, okay. Commissioner? Mayor?
Present.
Commissioner Loosar?
Present as well.
Thank you. All right, salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, approval of minutes. Did you guys all have time to look at them? I didn't see any issues with them and I would move to approve them as submitted.
I will second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we'll move on to the public hearing for the Betazoo Trail. Yes? Oh, right. Does anyone here have a subject they'd like to speak on that's not on the agenda? Uh, the Betazoo Trail and the containers. Sorry, my thing isn't moving and I can't, here we go. There should be physical agendas available somewhere in the council chambers, right? Okay. Um, I actually can't view this agenda. Yeah, so there are two items, the Betazoo Trail SEQA and the SC Zone Metal Shipping Container Text Amendment that has been revised. Those are the two items. Oh, I see. It's a swipe, not a scroll. Okay, it looks like none, so we will, uh, start the public hearing for the Betazoo Trail and we will stick to three minutes, please.
Madam Chairwoman, before we launch into that, um, I, for the record, um, am disqualified from making a decision related to the Betazoo Initial Study Mitigated Negative Dec- Agenda Item as my family has a real property in the right, in the right of way. So I will join the, the public and make any comments I have, um, in the three minutes allotted to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. All right, if anyone would like to get up? Yeah? No? She's looking at-
Would you like a staff presentation?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, we've done this, I guess, twice now, but yes, we would do the staff presentation, yes, yes.
So this item was continued from your July 12th meeting and it's the SEQA adoption for the Betazoo Trail, which will provide non-motorized transportation and recreational access from the city waterfront to Sequoia Park. The proposed Betazoo Trail will be approximately 2.75 miles and located along the second slough corridor and residential city streets. The trail itself will be an approximately 10-foot-wide paved Class 1 multi-use trail with two-foot shoulders on either side for segments located in natural areas such as along the slough and through the gulch, and a Class 3 bikeway where it shares space with motor vehicles and in the existing street right-of-way. The proposed Betazoo Trail project was evaluated through an initial study, mitigated negative declaration or ISMMD, which was sent to the State Clearing House and circulated for public review for a period of 39 days. In addition to the public hearing at the July meeting and tonight, at the request of the Planning Commission, a study session was held on August 5th where city staff and the city SEQA consultant provided information and answers, answered questions for the commission. Staff believes the Planning Commission can find, on the basis of the whole of the record before it, including the initial study and the comments received, that there's no substantial evidence the project will have a significant effect on the environment and the mitigated negative declaration reflects the lead agency's independent judgment and analysis and therefore meets the threshold for environmental review. Staff recommends you take any additional public testimony and then adopt the mitigated negative declaration, response to comments and errata, and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and a motion is available for your use. I'm also happy to answer any questions that I can and Scott Elsmore from Public Works is with us tonight too.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions for staff? Now we can take public comment and we will stick to three minutes, so just keep an eye on that time. You're welcome to come up.
It's probably my mask. Good evening, Commissioners, um, thank you, that's good. Um, my name is Karen Underwood and I'm here representing the Humboldt Trail Council. The council sponsors the volunteer trail steward program who work on the maintenance of local trails, including four groups of trails along the Eureka waterfront, uh, the, along the Eureka waterfront. These groups work monthly and in some cases weekly to keep our trails clean. They also provide eyes and ears along the trails. We look forward to assisting the city with the formation of a VTS group for the Betazoo Trail. Humboldt Trail Council also advocates for trail and we feel that the Betazoo Trail would be a strong addition to the city of Eureka as well as to our regional trail network. We have received inquiries about safer ways to travel from the upper neighborhoods in Eureka down to the town and waterfront trails. Today, there is no safe route. We support safe, active transportation routes. We also encourage the city personnel to continue to meet and communicate with local residents as this process moves along. Trails have a history of not being welcomed by adjoining neighbors. This is true in the Midwest, Upper New York, Colorado, Texas, and in the past McKinleville. Neighbors fear that trails will reduce home values, increase crime, and encourage homelessness. Once the trail is in, people discover the opposite. I would like to share a few quotes from trail users here in Eureka. We recently participated in a National Rails to Trails Conservancy's Trail Moments Campaign. We placed placards along the trails and asked people to reply via Instagram and leave a message about the trail moment they were having during the pandemic. Here are some of their responses and all of these are from Euricans. Quote, "Trails and other public open spaces are crucial to the physical and mental health of our communities," unquote. Another one, "We enjoy walking and biking the Eureka Waterfront Trail and other trails in our area. We utilize the waterfront trail at least three times a week. We also enjoy walking throughout Sequoia Park." Another one, "I love where I live. These trails have been a godsend for me and my running buddies. Clean and safe and very accessible for all. It's absolutely beautiful." Trails enrich our communities. The Trail Council urges you this evening to adopt the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great. Thanks. Uh, good evening. My name is Colin Fisk. As you know, I'm the Executive Director of the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities and I want to reiterate our strong support for the Betazoo Trail and our request that you certify the ISMMD after making the few modifications which we have requested already. In support of those requests, I do want to very briefly respond to staff and the consultants' comments at the study session last week. First, uh, the consultant stated that putting bicyclists onto Dolbyer Street doesn't create a SEQA impact to safety because the current road is even less safe than what's proposed. We believe that's an incorrect analysis because the project will result in many more bicyclists on the street, which most bicyclists currently avoid, so that, uh, even if the risk to each individual bicyclist is somewhat lower, the overall risk to the population increases. Therefore, the design should be modified to make it easier for bicyclists, uh, excuse, excuse me, to make it safer for bicyclists in order to avoid an impact under the geometric design or incompatible uses, questions on the SEQA checklist. And if that involves removing some on-street parking that staff mentioned, so be it. Second, staff stated that the street crossings don't meet the warrant for pedestrian hybrid beacons under Section 4F of what I will say is the notoriously anti-pedestrian manual-on-uniform traffic control devices. Uh, our analysis based on the publicly available data shows that they likely do meet that warrant, but furthermore, the so-called warrant is actually only guidance and is not a binding standard in the MUTCD. To avoid safety impacts under SEQA, again, we believe that you should use your good judgment, as you're allowed to do, to recognize the need for pedestrian hybrid beacons, which actually stop traffic at the Myrtle and Boone crossings, and to make this the default in the SEQA documents and let staff work out the engineering details at a later date. Finally, uh, staff stated that the induced vehicle trips from the parking lot would be negligible. If the induced trips will be negligible, then there isn't a need for 40 parking spots. Uh, 40 cars at a time clearly is not a negligible amount of trip generation. You need to either remove or dramatically reduce the size of the parking lot or recognize the trip generation impacts under SEQA Guidelines 15064.3 and mitigate them. I really don't want to be having these arguments with you all. I really want you to approve the SEQA documents, certify them, and move the project forward, but I do want to make sure that the trail is safe and that it meets SEQA standards first, and so I urge you to make these changes and then go ahead and certify the ISMMD. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, um, Commissioners. Um, my family really supports trails, but we continue to urge the commission to continue to temporarily withhold approval of the Betazoo ISMMD for three reasons. The ISMMD, in our estimation, is not yet complete in characterizing the environment, particularly the hydrologic and fluvial geomorphic environment. Even the blue line channels are not throughout and certainly secondary and tertiary trials that happen, uh, channels that occurred during flood times are not there. The ISMMD is also not yet sufficient in a, in addressing the environmental impacts or even proposing a sufficiently clear mitigation methodology. The ISMMD is wholly inadequate in capturing the impacts to the human environment. Now, given the flood of pub, public testimony and written response and concerns expressed about the SEQA process and spotty public engagement for such a large project, we think that a more robust and conscientious version of the ISMMD is warranted before it can be approved. Moreover, the language in the current ISMMD and staff presentations have inferred that the multitude of landowner's support needed for the project to move forward has been secured. This is not true. This unintentionally sends a message that the Betazoo Trail is a foregone conclusion, that it's a done deal, uh, which can appear arrogant and further put off the key right-of-way landowners. Uh, note to self, key landowners need to be brought into the, at the beginning of the project, at the conceptual level, not as an afterthought. There also seems to be a tug-of-war between the transportation elements of the general plan that would be really well-meet by this project and the natural resources goal of the general plan that would be compromised, and it's up to the commission to decide which elements of the general plan supersede and supplant the others, and I would want a formal site visit to better inform that disertment. The Betazoo Trail could be a really great amenity for the residents and visitors to the city of Eureka, but it's also a huge ask of landowners to yield their private property to public use and all that may come with it. This, this is not like trails previously planned and implemented in Eureka on public lands and in industrial brownfields. It's primarily a proposal to take the quiet wildland portion of dozens of people's backyards and one has to ask nicely for that. Please send the city a message at the Betazoo Trail warrants and more conscientious planning process and more thorough document than the version of the ISMMD before you tonight. In my family's initial response letter, um, we gave 10 specific recommendations for improving the ISMMD and many others have been offered through public test, testimony. It's not unkind to ask to give staff a do-over. The project is worth it and it's not really a do-over. It's just asking for due diligence commensurate with the scope of this kind of project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, Sam Norris. Thank you for letting me speak. The issue here I want to talk about is the environmental impact. On the last meeting, we were told it was negligible. It wasn't going to change anything. That's fine for someone that just walks through it once or twice, but anyone who lives there will tell you the exact opposite. I don't know how many, uh, privately owned stretches in Eureka are wetlands, but this one is and it is all basically closed off and a long finger goes into Ryan Slough. We have fish, deer, wildlife. It's very quiet, peaceful. Lots of the, the deer are usually tame and wander around when you can bring in public through, you know, a bunch of, um, equipment and daily use, all that goes away, so it is a huge environmental impact on the wildlife itself, not including bringing in the criminal element at night into people's backyards. Now, a lot of people are for this, which is fine, but the people that are for that, it's not going through their backyards and as the previous people said about, uh, all the trails and all that stuff, well, that's fine during the daytime, but at night it's totally different. Like, just walking in here, I got accosted by a homeless person trying to beg for money. As you know, the, um, the tweakers ride bicycles at night, no lights, and this will funnel all that through. So on, uh, your PDF, it talks about improved safety for, uh, people walking again at night. And it, uh, is not. It says enhanced quality of life. Well, enhanced quality of life actually is going to go downhill. Improved public health is also going to go downhill with the trash, feces, and garbage and illegal, uh, campers that are going to be going off-trail into the, um, wetlands to camp. Talks about the SRTS, the Safe Routes to School. Again, you're bringing in the criminal element to the schools. And it says it provides privacy for the property owners. How is that? Who's going to be, uh, who's going to police the tweakers at night? Police are not going to do anything. Uh, health hazards, trash, noise pollution, light pollution, you don't have any of that now. And who, who pays for all this? So that's basically what I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Larry Giventer. I've, uh, addressed you previously. I represent the 17-member Willowood Homeowners Association, which is located just off of Myrtle Avenue adjacent to the proposed, uh, trail alignment. We recommend the approval of the document that is before you today. Personally, I have a background in engineering and in public administration. I have reviewed the document. I believe it is sufficient for you to move on to the next step, which is further design and review and consideration of the, uh, issues that have been brought for you by our good neighbors to the south. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Mike Norris. I own quite a bit of property adjacent to the trial, trail, trail that you're suggesting coming up the slough. Uh, I have grave concerns about, uh, what may happen because of, uh, the element that may be drawn to that area, especially the homeless, because that's a beautiful area and they have access to my back property as well as all the properties that, that trail goes about across. I have a suggestion. My suggestion is that you move it over into the wetland behind the, uh, the sewer treatment plant, which is open, uh, wetland, and line it up with McFarland Avenue. And on McFarland Avenue, which is not less than, it's less than a half a block away from the proposed trail at this point, you could put a signal there, which would allow people to be crossing there, as well as McFarland Avenue, which is a, a low-traffic street. You could go straight up McFarland Avenue all the way to the end and there's a cut on the right-hand side, which would, you go, go to the west and take you out right behind Zane Junior High. There's no housing in that area at all, and then you could go south again to Boone Avenue. So that would do away with all the things that everybody's talking about. All the drugs that may come in there, the people, the homeless, the crime, all the things and the violation of people's property along Sunny Avenue as far, as well as McFarland. Uh, you all probably know that McFarland is a low-traffic area and that would do away with all the concerns of the property owners that you have heard for the last few days. So I have a concern about, uh, what's going to happen to my backyard. I have quite a bit of property along that trail. And if in fact there is, uh, an environmental impact and I have problems with the, the people that come along that trail, is the city going to be willing to pay for a fence that would go up to protect my property? And so I believe that if they are not willing, then I would have to come to the city and knock on their door to pay for it, because I don't want to put up with their garbage and anything else that people coming onto my property and camping out and all the garbage that would have to, I would have to put up with cleaning up for them because it is my property. So you can see my concern. We have property. It's quite beautiful. And as somebody had said, we have wildlife, very tame, and we're concerned about that because of course that, those, those environments and are going to be compromised by this trail. And I see the easy solution just by simply going up McFarland Avenue. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Norris.
Hello, my name is Kelly Nielsen and, um, my property abuts the, just south of the Zane Middle School. And, uh, as the previous, uh, speaker spoke, I agree with everything they said. I'm very concerned about the wetlands and the riparian. We have a stream, we have a private ravine between the school and our house and neighbors on that street. And, um, we have a stream that runs through there and then there's, uh, Alder Wetlands. And, uh, we, I've talked to neighbors who have already, before this, they had camping and vagrants and people like, like this gentleman just mentioned, people, uh, trash, all kinds of things, and this is on the private property. And then again, polluting the watershed is a big issue of mine. So, um, and besides that, I just also wanted to, um, to say that, um, you know, I'm really in favor of the Green Belt. I, 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 I wish, like the gentleman said, we could find a way to, to do this, but I think that, um, you know, you can't, um, just, you have this problem with the vagrants and, um, I am very concerned about the, uh, this is like the PG&E easement that runs down to Boon, Boone Street and there's also not a lot of homeowners in that area because as far as I can see, Segment 3, which I haven't been able to figure out on your website, um, that's mostly the middle school and then there's us and then there's another big parcel, which is in probate right now. They're not in any shape to, to do that. And then there's some other people who I met who have a house that impacts right on the PG&E easement. Um, again, I would be concerned about a fence some way of, because there was a path that used to go up, um, uh, from the PG&E easement up through to Hantoon Lane, which is the dead end that we live in. And, um, and that's really it. Also, I've heard, uh, we've seen sightings, we've seen spore of bear, mountain lion. I've heard some sightings of people that walk their dogs up there. I'm from Colorado originally. I never let my kids out at dusk, so I don't know how we're going to, you know, not only do you have less, people mentioned the wetlands issue, but you also have this safety issue on short winter days, kids coming home, right? You know, so that's a concern too. Anyway, I just feel also, we tried to, uh, get our, uh, neighbors and home, you know, people that were concerned, they very, they are, very much are concerned, but with the COVID surge right now, they didn't want to come tonight. And we thought twice about it too, so that's another thing. I really hope that you do postpone this because I don't feel like there's been enough, especially with the COVID surging. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your feedback.
Good evening. My name is Elaine Astru. Before the pandemic, I commuted on city streets on this route. So I really want to thank the city and the commission for, for coming up with a great plan for a great trail that I think is really needed in Eureka. The city street route for bike commuting isn't safe. I'm an incredibly experienced bicyclist. Um, I've ridden hundreds of thousands of miles on my bike and I know that most people will not, uh, bike commute unless they have a separated path from traffic. Uh, there are studies that show this and research that shows this, but I can also tell you from a first-person perspective, um, this is a really valuable, it's going to be a really valuable asset for Eureka and so I commend you for the work that's been done. As far as the specifics of the MND, I mean, I find from a cyclist's perspective that there are a couple of issues that I submitted in an email comment and I, I think I disagree with the city's SEQA consultant, that they are not significant. One is the parking lot on Myrtle Avenue, that it will not induce travel to, to the trail. Uh, Myrtle Avenue is a bike route and a pedestrian route that doesn't have an alternate. So in the HCOG bicycle plan, this plan for the trail as it stands now actually conflicts with the use of Myrtle Avenue as a bike route because it will decrease safety for bicyclists who are in the shoulder on Myrtle Avenue coming and going. And there is no alternative for them today. So I think I would minimize the size of the parking lot and I wouldn't include it in the plan. We don't really need people to be driving to the, to a three-mile-long trail or two-and-a-half miles. Sorry, I don't remember the exact length, but it's, it's not a must and we shouldn't develop a parking facility along an existing bike route that has no alternative. That's not safe. So that's one of my comments. And then the other comment is, like I said, I'm a very experienced cyclist, like unbelievably, uh, experienced and I don't ride my bike on the street, on Dolbyer Street or on W Street as they stand. So I recommend for the design to include a protected bikeway on one of those routes so that people will actually use it to get to, to the zoo and it can fulfill that part of its mission. Thank you very much for listening, for this opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? All right, we'll close the public hearing and move back to the commission. Any questions for staff?
So I guess for everyone else's benefit, I wanted to share, I spoke with Kristin prior to the start of the hearing. I had some questions about subsequent permitting and she was kind enough to, uh, clarify. So you may recall at the last hearing, I asked about whether there would be subsequent discretionary permits that would come in the wake of tonight's action. And there will be in some form in the coastal zone, which would be the segments of the trail, the northernmost segments. But beyond that, where we've heard the majority of the concerns and most of the folks in the room tonight, would not be subject to a discretionary action by us or the city council, from what I can tell. I would say, uh, so Kristin pointed out, uh, in, uh, a section of zoning regulations I didn't have, that public projects or projects on city-owned land are not subject to discretionary review within the inland zoning regulations. And that was why her answer was last week that way. There is a hair to split. I mean, I'm a professional bureaucrat, so I would offer that, there's always a hair you can split. And I would offer that the hair I see splitable is, we're not talking about public land right now as we sit and consider this mitigated negative, that we're talking about land to be acquired by the city through negotiation with private property owners, many of which are in the room tonight. And I would ask my fellow commissioners whether or not that warrants subsequent discretionary review, given the nature of the project as the MND appears before us, is not a project on public land, but a conceptual project that may or may not, when all the dust settles on the final design, be exclusively located on public land. Maybe, some people might say, you can have an easement, but you're not going to be able to get the land, you know? We don't know that at this juncture. And I don't have a way to prognosticate, but I would say that that is one of the greatest causes for concern. I went into the last meeting thinking that we would see this again in its entirety, but I'm not confident in that. There are other things to talk about, but I wanted to kind of introduce that and see what some of my other colleagues think about that idea. And I'd like to hear from Kristin, of course.
Kristin, could you maybe bring up the section so we could see it? I think that would help. If there is a section in the inland code that specifically says that city projects are exempt. I guess I'm kind of a visual person. Yeah, it is an interesting hair to split. It seems a little bit tangential in a way, but obviously really important. So I guess we might as well get this section figured out before we talk about the impacts discussed in the sequoque document. But they are two pretty different conversations. But as another bureaucrat, I too can get into hair splitting. So let's split those hairs and see what happens.
So I've kind of highlighted it there. Right in the middle of the paragraph, it says, "The zoning code does not apply to public projects of the city of Eureka." Goes on to say, "Private projects on leased lands owned by the city of Eureka are not public projects of the city." So in other words, if the city owns a piece of property, we lease it to somebody else and there's a project on that property, it's not a public project for purposes of zoning code.
My initial read on this language is that it's talking about projects irrespective of city ownership of the underlying land. Are you seeing a different read?
I don't see a different read. I just got the section right before the meeting and I was struggling before I, to find somewhere in the code. Looking at it in this light, I'd say it's a hard one to read any other way.
I agree. I mean, it is challenging to not have more, more ability to guide some of the items that I feel like could be designed in a way that would be safer if they aren't considered sequoque impacts. So to kind of open up the broader discussion, one of the commentators tonight talked about how warrants are guidelines and not actual rules. And I completely agree with that. I think that's a valid point. I'm not sure how I feel about whether or not the consultant's argument about baseline is adequate. And I'd like to maybe discuss that. I'm kind of of two minds about it and I'd be curious to hear what the other commissioners think. I think the argument being made was if the project could be considered to substantially increase hazards due not to a design feature but to incompatible uses, meaning increasing the usage of bicyclists on a roadway. So in that light, you know, what do the two of you think about whether or not that would be considered a sequoque impact?
Yeah, so Section C of the checklist, substantially increase hazards due to a geometric design feature or incompatible uses. I think it's the latter part. And I tend to look at it as, we heard from one of the speakers tonight, who I found her testimony quite compelling actually, that I rode my bike in New York City as a bicycle messenger and I can tolerate a pretty high level of chaos and I would not ride on many streets in this city and including the ones that are targeted for sharrows in the vicinity of the zoo. And that is to me putting unsuspecting people in a position of danger because they're not adequately equipped or with the infrastructure itself to carefully navigate those segments of this trail that we're considering. So that to me gets to the spirit of that section of the checklist and warrants, no pun intended, you know, actual treatment in the overall project design that we just don't have available in our 25% land that we're operating on. I did suggest, and I think it's worth really actually taking seriously, reallocating the rights of way and the adjacent city-owned land within the frontage of the zoo to achieve at least in that section where we have more control over project design and real estate, a better situation for the cyclist. I don't think it's about pedestrian issues. It's really about bicycle. If this is a bicycle facility as well as a pedestrian one, that form of transportation is not effectively served in this portion of the project. And in fact, I find it compelling that it's actually resulting in a potential unmitigated impact. And it's not a baseline issue. The baseline is people don't see a bike lane and they wouldn't, they would use their own judgment and say, I'm not maybe going to take that street. But when they see those, that painting, you know, on the pavement, they may think otherwise, like this is a good idea. I don't think it is in the current kind of context we have before us.
As a fairly avid cyclist, I would agree with you there too. Definitely, and on-street parking as with a bike lane is such a scary situation. Not only just moving cars, but doors opening and people stepping into that lane without looking. And so I agree with you. It's pretty well-used as it is now. I have concerns about that as well.
Mine was, yeah. I'll get a little closer for you. Yeah, so I feel like just sort of to wrap that thought up partially, I mean, it sounds like mostly people are concerned about safety and about impacts to biological resources. And those seem like the two sort of heavy hitter topic areas. Maybe we can sort of finish with those. Are there any other, any other parts of the document that don't seem adequate or that we should talk about?
I think, well, the safety part has, I think, a couple of different parts, not only that bike lane, but the parking lot, I think, is a point of contention as well. And there has been some good points made as far as what those issues would be. So I think some consideration there would be warranted. So I guess, can we send some parts back to staff to have more thought done, including the beacons? There's some requests for those pedestrian beacons and some of those things seem kind of up in the air.
So I think staff has certainly heard the comments from the public and staff has heard the comments from the planning commission. And we can certainly take those comments into account as we move forward and look at, you know, is there something else that we can do specifically on Dolberg Street? The alignment in the natural areas that's going to be decided on later on, that's going to play into any impacts to wildlife. So until we actually have that information, it's really difficult to be able to say, yes, this is definitely an impact or no, it's not. The, if, in the process of getting a more complete design, it's determined that there are environmental impacts that were not studied in the ISMND currently. At that point in time, we would be having to look at whether we needed to revise it, recirculate it, allow public comment, bring it back for a public hearing, or whether it ends up that the project goes forward basically the way that it's kind of looking these days.
I think maybe what my request would be, I guess I'm not going to speak for the commission as a whole, but my request would be, why don't we just go above and beyond in the project description and add in safety elements that aren't currently there and then bring it back at that point? We can do that with sections of the roadway. There's no reason why we couldn't add them above and beyond and then we wouldn't have any concerns related to traffic safety.
I think if that's something that you wanted to propose, you certainly could.
Thoughts on safety, traffic safety?
Segmentation is a bad word in sequoque land, but I do kind of want to offer that as a way to kind of get through the kind of testimony we've heard and kind of, I think you were saying the same thing. So there's the segments on the southernmost reach of the project that have some issues because they're not Class 3 facilities or Class 3, not Class 1. And those should be, I think we're, I think we're kind of starting to center on agreement perhaps that those are inadequate or could be dramatically improved in some ways. Then there's the components that are at the crossings at Booner and Myrtle that we have a proposed treatment that we're getting requests for, the pedestrian flashers. That could be taken up. And then there's the matter of the parking lot, which we haven't heard a lot of testimony about. And the matter of whether we find any of the arguments about the biological concerns compelling to the point where we need tweaks to that section of the document or the mitigation measures that are proposed. I'm trying to think if there's any other sections.
Are we sticking just to safety? Because there is this section really too about, there seems to be a lack of support from some very important homeowners in that area. And it seems to me we would want them to feel confident and comfortable, like giving up their land rights basically for a public project. So I'm not sure exactly how to mitigate that, but I think it needs to be taken into consideration of the fact that we could approve this and then these landowners, one after the other, say, no, 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 no. So I think it's worth some kind of consideration.
Yeah, kind of on that point, I mean, what we're talking about tonight isn't if it's a good idea to do this project or not, isn't what, you know, who's going to use it? If it's going to be homeless, you know, individuals or, you know, me and my mother. We're only talking about the environmental impacts of the project. And, you know, this project may or may not be feasible based on property owner interests. Like we could approve this, we could analyze every impact and still have the project die if nobody wants to give up their land. So that is sort of odd that we're doing it that way. But ultimately, that's something for staff and the council to work out. I see that kind of as outside of our scope. But still a very valid point. And I know we're hearing a lot of that. And I do appreciate, at our study session, one gentleman came and said, it's not the trail that I don't like. It's not knowing who's going to use it and what they're going to do on it. And I thought that was very honest and I appreciated that feedback.
Yes, since we're talking about the subject of landowner consent and the right-of-way acquisition, it seemed like Mr. Elsmore in asking about whether or not consent would be voluntary or not, just indicated at our last meeting that it would be a matter of the landowner being willing to. And I guess I would like to hear for sure that something, you know, eminent domain would not be an approach that would be used in the context of this project. You know, I don't want to ask staff to answer a question that they don't actually have the authority to answer, but if it's not actually known, I'd like to know that at this point. I think it's relevant to the discussion. So if anyone feels comfortable fielding that one, it'll put it more bluntly. If a landowner was unwilling to give up the right-of-way through a sale to the city of a portion of their property, would there be a potential for the city acquiring the land through other means like eminent domain?
So I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know if Mr. Elsmore would care to respond, or maybe he doesn't know either.
So again, with a trail, I talked about this a little bit the other night. So typically with how most trail projects, the point of origin to completion, you do some preliminary design to kind of understand generally where you're going, where you're beginning, where you're ending, what you think it's going to look like, right? Go through environmental to see what are constraints would we have in these areas? Then you go after funding for design and right-of-way. So the right-of-way process is getting funds to acquire right-of-way in the sense of purchasing or being granted easements. So what we would be looking in, basically all the trails that have occurred in the county or the city have been where the city goes to a landowner and says, first off, would you be willing to grant us an easement or sell us an easement? And that right-of-way fund, you ask for, you estimate a cost of land, whatever the, you know, existing cost per acre of land is. So when you go after funding, you say, we need to get 10 acres of land for this trailer, pick your number. And we assume that an acre of land costs $1,000. We're going to assume, we're going to ask for $10,000 so we can, that's the going price for an easement. So we purchase that easement. So that's how, that's how you acquire right-of-way. Now, is there eminent domain? The eminent domain is a thing that exists that's, I don't think it's used very often for trail projects. There's no intent for that. Our intent that we go after is to be, A, either purchase one or be granted that easement. And that's the way we would go after the funding and the planning for this project, if that makes sense.
Okay. Well, it seems pretty unlikely to me, and I'm not an eminent domain expert, but I would be shocked if they tried to do eminent domain for this project. So I think what it would come down to is voluntarily, property owners would give right-of-way or offer it for purchase, or the trail would not come to fruition. And I think that's, that's how it would happen. So it's sort of bizarre to be asked to do this environmental before we know whether or not we have permission, but I think that's where we're at. And so that's somewhat irrespective to the environmental impacts. I personally have no real concerns with biological impacts. I feel like the consultant did a good job of explaining that this is one step in a longer journey for this project. There will be coastal commission review, fish and wildlife review, Army Corps review. Pretty much everything has been analyzed within the area potential effect. They made a very wide area and they have mitigations that are generic enough intentionally to be able to use basically ratios for whatever is impacted. And there's a lot of studies and surveys for whatever is chosen for the right-of-way. So I feel comfortable with that. My questions are really more about safety of users. My questions are really more about safety of users. And that's basically what I have to say at this stage about what we have before us tonight.
I appreciate you giving some clarity on what really we're focused on because it does get a little muddied. I'm wondering if our best option is to send it back to staff with those specific safety concerns to be addressed if they can't be addressed here tonight?
Madam Chair, I'm not sure that we can address those at this point in time. With the the extent of the plan that we have right now, what is in the MND is our best analysis of what the potential safety issues are. As we go forward, like I mentioned before, we've kind of firm up the plans and decide exactly where it is and where it's going. I think at that point in time, we can certainly address those safety concerns.
So to clarify, the analysis would not change, but you can update the project description to include elements regarding safety on certain sections of the roadway, as you already indicated, correct?
I think that potential certainly is there. Again, we would need to look at, you know, how far can you go under Sequel before you have to redo it?
I mean, if we were to adopt MND tonight, it wouldn't, to me, preclude there being refinements of the project, but it certainly wouldn't ensure that there would be. And that's my greatest concern and why I brought up the subsequent permitting. Because without having any control over what emerges in the future, we're telling the folks and audience to trust the process, trust the design, trust that you'll still have a voice, and, but it won't be before us. It'll be through the folks that manage the process from here on out, city staff essentially. You know, the commission has, or the council has taken this up on a variety of occasions, as we heard from Mr. Elsmore, and they will receive progress reports to a certain extent. And those will provide avenues for directing design components. And the way I think of it is, the MND sets the sideboards for the right-of-way, the impacts. If you stay within those sideboards, you know, we're still covered. It's just, there's no assurances for the folks and audience that those tweaks and nuances that could be the difference between you being extremely disenfranchised by the way the project looks or very satisfied are unknown. We don't have confidence at this juncture. We know there's a possibility that we can get there. But I think there's a huge amount to be noted with respect to easement acquisition. You're in the driver's seat, you know, you're, they require your consent ultimately. What I'm hearing is that there's not an interest in trying to force you to give up your land. And insofar as that's the case, securing an easement and an obligation to construct a fence would probably be pretty small potatoes for the city when negotiating a purchase price. I mean, things of that nature can emerge as those design, you know, as a design gets more fixed, I guess. So I'm prepared to vote on the MND today. But there is things, and like I said, the segments that I think are worth discussing, I have some thoughts about and would be happy to take up. But I'd be interested to see if there's interest in getting more refinement before we take action. If that's the case, I'm willing to listen and be convinced.
I guess the final thing for me, and then, you know, I'm curious to hear Vice Chair Mayor's thoughts as well, is, you know, the final nugget for me is, are we sure that some of these sections of roadway, you know, it won't constitute incompatible uses by adding new users, new bicyclists? And is there anything that we could do now in the project description to update that? You know, it'd be one more meeting to see what we could get from our traffic team, sort of assurances for how it will be designed. And that has little to do with where the roadway is going to be because we know exactly where it's going to be. It's going to be on W Street, for example, you know, it's in a city right-of-way. So that's pretty obvious. I could go either way. I agree, we could put it in the hands of staff, they know how we feel about it. Or we could request that they add it to the project description or come up with some, you know, clear explanation why it's infeasible at this point.
Yeah, I'm feeling a little stuck frankly. I do have some concerns, and I do have concerns because they're not coming back to a more public forum to be discussed. And we've seen this negatively impact projects before and negatively impact the commission. So I would like to see a little more information. I'd be open to having more meetings about this. It is really, I think, an important project. And doing it right from the beginning and pushing it in the right direction in the beginning, I think is a value. And there are a lot of legitimate concerns. And if we stick to, like you're saying, W Street, where we know those, that makes it clear rather than having the ambiguity of where the trail is actually going to be. I think that's a fair start.
I guess I propose the beginning of a motion then, and I'm open to modifications. But I would move that we defer a decision on the project until we receive an updated project description with more information about how to ensure that bicyclists and vehicles will not be incompatible on sections of city road right-of-way, pre-existing city road right-of-way. So I would like more information personally on segments of the trail that we know where they're going to go because we don't need to acquire land from private owners. We already have the land because it's a public road. But shortened, that's a motion, but shorten that. That's basically what I'm suggesting.
I'm not, I don't have a problem with the motion except that I'm a little not, I'm a little unsure that staff would have enough guidance. I think it'd be a little bit open-ended. I'm thinking of, you know, using the language in the motion along those various segments of the project. But, you know, the, I had to create my own map to be able to manage what was what. I mean, it's, and so, you know, there's section six, which is Dolby and W Street. There's section five, which includes Dolby and its jog west before it begins to enter the green belt. Then the next public right-of-way interface that I can see would be, I mean, there's trail entry points along the route, but the next one would be where it crosses Booner. Then it would enter Zane, this is going from south to north. And then you'd have the next interface at Myrtle Avenue. So to me, it would be the Myrtle Avenue portion, the Booner portion, and then the portions within the final segment and the fifth segments, five and six. Those would be the areas where the greatest amount of the class three trail infrastructure would be up for, you know, debate, I think.
What if we could request more information on the class three segments? Would that encompass all those?
I think that would, yeah, except for the crossings, which are sort of their own weird.
So class three segments and intersections slash crossings, pedestrian crossings. Okay, new motion. I would move to request additional information to be built into the project description regarding the class three sections, segments of the roadway on public right-of-way in addition to pedestrian crossings of those road segments.
I'm comfortable with that, I'll second that. I would like to hear a discussion about the parking lot if we could, while we have everyone's attention and we're.
And that would be the next step, some more discussion. I don't like the parking lot, but that's also a personal thing. But I do see that there are issues just with safety in the lots that I've used on the waterfront trail. There is a lot of nefarious behavior, and I think bringing up the point of that it adds more traffic and 40 spots is a lot. So I have concerns about it, and I would agree with the sentiments of some of the speakers tonight.
I have kind of mixed feelings about the parking lot because I'm pretty sure that the proposed parking lot would be directly adjacent to one of the Link housing developments, which is going to be high-density housing in that area. And it's not going to have a lot of parking, which I know is a concern for neighbors as well. So there is an argument to be made to retain it, I would think, just to ensure that users of both the housing and the trail can be accommodated in some city-retained parking lot.
I guess, oh, sorry, Kristen, go ahead.
So I was just going to add that that parking lot will be located in the coastal zone and support the whole trail, but also the portion of the trail that's going to be located in the coastal zone. One of the primary purposes that the coastal commission looks at when they're looking at approving things like trails is where are people going to park that use the trail? So I think what the ISM and D is saying is that there could be a parking lot there that's up to 40 spaces. I think there's wiggle room to reduce the number of those spaces potentially if all of those spaces were not required by the coastal commission. But I think that completely removing it probably would not pass the coastal commission because they, they're looking at access to the coast. And a parking lot provides access to the coast along with the trail.
So similar sort of to there being an APE where that's like the maximum that we're talking about, this would be the maximum size of a parking lot, and it could be reduced, but we're analyzing like the maximum size.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Is there a reason besides maybe just spatial issues that there isn't consideration to add a parking lot on the other side of the trail closer to the zoo, which is already pretty impacted by current parking issues?
So there actually, I believe, is parking available or parking spaces, not only surrounding the zoo, but in between the school and
Sure, right.
The National Guard Armory.
Which are very few spaces.
But there are spaces. Whereas on Myrtle Avenue, there are no spaces because of the bike lanes.
I see.
I guess my thought on the parking lot is, and I got a huge argument with a few of my friends about this, but, you know, parking lots are not real exciting things for me, but parking lots adjacent to multimodal transportation options are useful. But I think oftentimes, people that are, you know, alternate form of transportation advocates like to kind of, I don't know, I don't want to characterize anybody incorrectly. To me, what seems like a missed opportunity is this should be a parking lot that's an electric vehicle charging station slash parking lot. Like, that should be part of like the design period for parking lots in the future. And to me, that's like an automatic way of mitigating GHG emissions and the environmental document. It doesn't mean that it has to be built that way, but like if you pave an area and you've now encapped a whole area, you're not going to go back in and run conduit and all that. So to me, making it EV-ready was a no-brainer, and it could serve multiple purposes. It could be a transit hub, you know, of sorts. And I'm looking at it not as, who's going to drive to Myrtle Avenue and use this segment between the bay and the zoo? It's part of a regional transportation network, having strategically located parking spaces for park and ride of the future, the ride being your bicycle, not a car. Like, that to me is useful. But it's worth noting, Alberston Park, you know, the giant lot in front of the, you know, the end of C Street. I mean, there's no shortage of parking adjacent to the existing Bay Trail, you know, and the parking facilities that we've seen elsewhere. So that, to me, is a greater concern. It's like, do we need this parking lot right next to the Myrtle Avenue launch point? Or do we want people to park at one of these other locations and get to Myrtle Avenue and maybe ride a mile on their bike that they wouldn't have otherwise? That, to me, is the bigger issue. But it could serve a benefit to like people in the Myrtle Avenue that are jumping on the trail to go to Arcata, or people that are out of town that don't live here. I mean, those are the types of things that I think are worthy of having a parking lot. But it should be EV-ready. I'd like to see that as part of the project design if we're going to include it.
And I think when we get to the design phase, absolutely, we can look at those kinds of things. But I'm not sure that it needs to be in the ISM and D.
One thing that I will say on that note is the parking lot is in the coastal zone, correct? So there will be a use permit process for that. And if we want to require a charging station at that time, we would have the opportunity as a commission.
So I think that means that if we take action on the MND tonight, we're not compelling this project to involve a parking lot because it will still have another milestone before it could be authorized, both through us and the coastal commission. I think that's a fair way to look at it, hopefully. Does that sound right, Kristen?
Yes. So parking lots, should we continue to discuss it? Or do we want to keep the motion in the second as it stands?
You have a first and a second, and I'd be willing to vote on it at this point without making adjustments.
So if we, if this motion were passed, we would expect this to reappear before us with some additional treatment of the topics we summarized in the motion with respect to pedestrian safety and bicyclist safety within those trail segments. And then that would be when we'd be taking action on the MND conceivably.
Correct. And the argument in my mind is that if we have more information in the project description, there will be no need for mitigation because it will have been designed in such a way that it didn't require additional mitigation related to the incompatibility of users per that Sequois section that talked about transportation and safety.
I agree.
It feels like a great compromise and also accomplishes the goal of safety as well.
So Commissioners, if you're going to take that action, we would ask that you then again continue the public hearing to the next regular meeting.
Would you like me to put that in the motion? Is that required? Okay, so the motion would be as previously stated, plus continuing this item to the next regularly scheduled hearing of the Planning Commission.
Would that give staff enough time to return with?
Yes, okay, great.
And are you willing to second that with the edit?
Yeah, I'll second the revised motion.
So it sounds like we're ready to vote? Do you want to do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Freitas?
Aye.
Commissioner Lazar?
Aye.
And Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Assistant Carries?
And thank you again to everyone who came out to speak. We appreciate all your feedback, it's helped out a lot. All right. So it looks like what's up next is the, thank you. A C-zone metal shipping container text amendment revised. Would you like to give your presentation?
Yes, just one moment, please.
Oh, we'll have that one Commissioner Benson return. Welcome back.
Hey.
Thank you and good evening again. However, the next meeting is going to be the Zoom.
What's that?
It will be on Zoom, the next meeting.
On Zoom?
Yeah.
Oh, will we be notified of that?
Yes, we'll make sure that you are.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. We'll make sure that you are if you're within the APE. I'll say it back. I said, we'll make sure that you are if you're within the APE.
What's the APE?
The area potential effect.
Oh, I am.
Thank you.
Yeah?
September thirteenth. Thank you. So, thank you, Commissioners. Um, this is the SC Zone Metal Shipping Container Text Amendment, which came before you for review. And recommendation to the City Council at your May meeting. Pop and Barclay applied to amend the zoning code to allow metal shipping containers. Or Conex boxes to be used for permanent outdoor storage in the Inland SC Service Commercial Zone District. As a reminder, the inland SC zone is primarily located along the east side of Broadway to West Washington Street. And there is one small parcel at the corner of Myrtle and West that is zoned SC. At the May meeting, the Commission recommended council include language to require a minor use permit to allow the storage containers to remain on site for more than ten years. And then adopt the amended ordinance. The draft ordinance, including the Commission's recommendation, was presented to council for introduction at their June first, twenty twenty-one meeting. During can during the council's discussion, they expressed concern about creating what they kind of what. Staff kind of refers to as contain- container canyons along alleys, um, if the amendment were approved and. Therefore did not introduce the ordinance at that meeting. So following some research, staff has recommended limitations on the length of storage containers that can be placed along an alley. And a prohibition on stacking them. Staff added language and figures to the amendment to respond to the council's concerns. Additionally, language requested by Development Services Building has also been added. Because the proposed ordinance has substantially changed from what the Commission originally reviewed in May. The code requires the Commission to again review and make recommendation to the City Council. And staff recommends that you hold a public hearing and recommend council adopt the ordinance as currently proposed. And there is a motion available for your use. I'm happy to answer any questions when the applicant is with us in the audience.
I remember this being sort of a back and forth project, and I do appreciate the. Thought that went into um updating this. Clearly, you know, there was some definite consideration of our feedback. Um, I think that it does make sense as it's been laid out. Um, the only thing that I flagged is the um ten-year. Sort of shift from ten years, no minor use permit to ten years, after ten years, you have a minor use permit process. I think that that does make sense to limit it, but I'm curious to hear how staff will track. How long they've had their shipping container. It seems like it could be a burden on staff. Um, if there are, you know, a bunch of those to keep track of.
So I'm not necessarily envisioning envisioning a big rush on people wanting to put shipping containers on their property, however. Um, we did talk about this before, um, and what the process could be if we were going to um track them and. Um, as discussed before, we do track um Mills Act applications. Um, we have to keep track of when uh discretionary permit reviews are going to expire, if people don't act on them, that kind of thing, so. I think the possibility certainly exists that if the council decided to include the ten-year limitation, that we would figure out a way to track that.
For the purposes of moving this discussion forward towards action, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion as written.
I think we have to go to some public comment first.
Oh, sorry, sorry, okay. Then I will, then I will wait, so additional.
He read the whole paragraph. I thought he interjected my apologies.
Additional discussion then. Um, what I'd like to say is, um, I thought we did really well in March to to define the time span. From in perpetuity to ten years, just looking at climate change and what what could change over time and just and just planning horizons. And City Council really did a good job. They further mitigated um the aesthetic concerns by the ten-foot offset, by not stacking. Um, you know, to avoid these container canyons, so so I feel like there has been really great progress. On this and that we're working together as a well-oiled machine in terms of moving this forward. My remaining concern. Is public safety and I and again, I sort of, I worry that the temporary. Containers, if they're not attached to the ground, could really be mobile in earthquakes, tsunamis, or even vehicle accidents, and. So I guess I have a question for staff, um, then, are, you know, are there building code requirements, uh, Kristen, a prin- principal planner gets? Um, you know, that would mitigate potential container mobility? Can you tell us a little bit more about that?
Certainly. So just for clarity, the the City Council has not actually seen this proposal. This was what staff put together based on the discussion that they had at the City Council meeting. So just wanted to be clear on that. Um, yes, and the building official did review the proposed changes, made some suggestions, so. Um, the uh shipping container installation will be um subject to building code requirements. As required, I guess is the best way to say that. So. There may be the possibility that they're going to have to put them on a permanent foundation, even if it's only for ten years. Um, there may be a requirement to somehow, some other way, attach them to the ground. Um, if they're going to put. Electrical in them. Obviously, they're going to need a building permit for that, so. And if somebody pops one out there and doesn't come and talk to us beforehand, we can certainly have the code enforcement officers. Go out there and talk with them about that and take care of it that way.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, they won't, can- containers won't necessarily be principally permitted, that there will, there will still be an additional process that the applicant has to go through just to. Assure us this this uh security issue.
So from a zoning standpoint, if they meet all the requirements, they will be principally permitted. If they don't, then they need a minor use permit. But they may also need to comply with building regulations, which is a separate non-discretionary. Process.
So I'm hearing that then, um, that it's a maybe, uh, in terms of them having to. Meet certain guidelines other than the ten-foot, and in terms of being attached to the ground, that's a, going to be on a site-by-site basis, or? What what might trigger that discussion?
So if a building permit is needed to place the shipping container, they would have to go through that process. While. The building plans would be referred to the Planning Department. We would confirm that they're applying or complying, excuse me. With um the regulations in our code. And then if so, we would sign off and um once engineering, building and fire are. Can approve the building plans and they would be approved.
So Kristen, I I had a question about, I noticed in the language, um, I think it was section. I gotta find my notepad. Yeah, I think it was a section about, you kind of have this width that you go with. Damn, I lost my my cheat sheet. Okay, so I'll just look it here. So it it's a. Says where shipping containers locate ten or more feet from a property line, okay, the, where you have an existing permanent structure. Um, in the same. It didn't say anything about being on the same parcel, so I wondered whether or not that needed to be clarified in the language of the. The draft revisions. Are we interested in any permanent structure along the same alley on an adjacent property dictating that someone have to use half of the remaining? Frontage that's not occupied? I guess that was what I was wondering, or was it only permanent structures on the same property where the shipping container was proposed?
Per the property where the shipping container is proposed.
I guess I just didn't see that clarified in the code and I wondered if it would be a, you know, suddenly read to imply to. Any portion of the alley where there's permanent structures along that same frontage, but. It's kind of treated towards the end where it's somewhere in there, uh.
I'm just having, I'm just trying to envision when somebody. Let me make sure I'm clear on what you're envisioning. Somebody's proposing to put a shipping container on a property that that has an alley, and they're getting it in the rear like they're supposed to. The next door neighbor. Has either a permanent building or their own shipping container. So, yeah, it's parcel by parcel.
That's what I figured. I just couldn't see that in the language of the draft, so I thought, you know. Just so that someone doesn't get confused that if there's a permanent structure on a building. On an adjoining land that the diagram isn't showing, just any bill on any anywhere on the alley, it's on the same parcel where the container is proposed. That's that's just something I noticed when I was reading it.
Right, and that's why the figures are trying to show that it's one parcel using the parcel line border. And these figures are similar to other ones that are in our code, so.
Gotcha.
I also um wanted to say I appreciated the examples. For example, isn't that, I think that made it a little bit um more clear. It is obviously pretty dense. Um, in terms of all these different scenarios for setbacks and so forth. Um, so I just want to say I appreciated that. I think it'll make it easier for the average person to understand. Do you guys have any more questions for staff? Otherwise, I'll open up to public comment. All right. Looks like. Michael's here.
Good evening. I don't have a lot of comment. I'm Michael Kraft with Pop and Barclay. We're obviously the applicant. Um, really appreciate the seriousness with which uh everybody has taken this, doubly appreciate. Principal Planner Gatz and the time that she's put into this. It is dense, it's pretty dull. And so uh a- as the applicant, I guess the good news is that we are starting to fill up that Broadway location. Uh, the former Kmart, uh, which is why we've asked for for this ability to to do that behind that that structure. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have that are kind of narrow to us and and our needs as the applicant. I will say that. It's evolved enough that it's gotten a little dense for me, so I don't feel qualified to comment on much more than that, but I'm happy to take questions if you have Pop and Barclay questions.
Do you feel like, as written, it accommodates your need as a business?
Yes.
Great.
Yes, I mean, it's slightly more complicated, but understandably so, and, you know, it's it's hard to love shipping containers, so. It's a, I think it's appropriate caution. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Someone willing to make a motion here? Oh, we're closing public comment, thank you. Details matter.
Okay, I will go ahead and make the motion and I will read verbatim. I move the Planning Commission that. Oh, is it not on?
It's on.
Okay. I move the Planning Commission adopt a resolution making the findings required to approve a revised text amendment. And I further move we forward a recommendation to the City Council to adopt the revised text amendment. To allow metal shipping containers for permanent outdoor storage in the SC Service Commercial Zone District.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Yeah, just the word permanent, you know, just can that be misleading when we've sort of set? It makes it sound like for permanent outdoor storage rather than temporal outdoor storage. We, it seems like we put a time limit on it. Would that, would it be better to say? Uh, a phased, temporal, um, period? What would be, what would be a clearer way, or is it clear enough as it is? I'd like to hear from other commissioners.
One comment I would make is that this is purely a resolution to the council to consider and adopt the text amendment. So irrespective of the exact verbiage, I agree it maybe is a bit misleading. It won't make any actual change to the zoning code.
And further, it's to clarify the difference between what's already in the code, allowing temporary use of shipping containers in SC zone districts. So temporary use is allowed, permanent use for up to ten years with a minor use permit is proposed.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Uh, any more discussion? Want to do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Freitas?
Aye.
Commissioner Lazar?
Uh, yes.
And Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you. I think I'm going to try to get back to the front here, but we're doing a new business, old business? There doesn't seem to be any, and no reports in communications? So we're on to adjournment? Good job.